Good evening and welcome to Athens City Council. It's Monday, May 3rd, 2021 at 7:00 PM. And we're, tonight, we're in regular session. We'll lead off with our agenda item of establishing the quorum, and all members of council are present. The next item of business is disposition of minutes for the regular session held on April 19th, 2021. I can have a motion for approval of these minutes. Moved by Chris Fall and seconded by Sarah Grace. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the minutes have been approved. We next have communications. And council member, council members have received two communications from the Department of Commerce. The first one is a notice stating that all permits to sell alcoholic beverages in our political subdivision expire on July 1. And that if we have any objection to any of these being renewed, that we have the right to pass a resolution to forward to the Department of Commerce. And they urge us to contact our law enforcement agency to make sure that there is any information which will aid us in our decision if we would so decide to do that. The second notice is from the same, the Division of Liquor Control in the Department of Commerce. And this is for a transfer of a permit from Wydner Carryout doing businesses Shopmart at 1 Stimson Avenue. And it's being transferred to Parmar Oil Company of 1 Stimson Avenue. And if we have any comments about this, that we, they would have to have the responses from the city council by May 17. And are there any communications from other council members? All right, we'll move on to reports and communications from other elected officials. Law Director Eliason.
No report.
No report, okay. And I don't see Auditor Hecht with us yet tonight, though she may be joining us later. And Mayor Patterson.
Let me unmute myself.
Okay.
Thank you, President Nisley. A few items tonight, the first of which I'd like to share with council and our viewing, viewing audiences, that we received this nice little plaque for being a TreeCityUSA for 30 years. Now, I should also qualify that we were 30 years last year. And during the pandemic, we did not receive, we weren't able to accept this award. We're actually 31 years as a TreeCityUSA city. The next thing I wanted to share with council and people viewing is that we received this rather nice plaque from the Athens Area Standouts. This was really nice, community award for five years, being a five-year sponsor for the Athens Area Standout. The last thing I would like to share, President Nisley, is I do want to report out to council this evening. A lot of what Athens has undertaken, some items for a very long time, and some are newer when it comes to racial equity here in the city of Athens. A lot of this is, I have compiled, because of hearing individuals, people say that the city has done absolutely nothing when it comes to racial equity, and it couldn't be any further from what is actual. So if council would bear with me for a few moments, I would like to read through, not in all the detail, but I want to kind of chronologically go through sundry different things that the city has been doing in our journey for racial equity here in the city of Athens. In 2010, council authorized the charter for a Community Relations Committee, which is a group that comes together to avoid and reduce intergroup tensions, promote tolerance, goodwill, and ensure equity of treatment and opportunity for all persons regardless of race, creed, color, sex, sexual orientation, gender identity or expression, national origin or ancestry, marital status, marital or familial status, religious belief, age, or disabilities. In 2012, joint, the council, actually council didn't authorize this. The former mayor and the president of Ohio University authorized the creation of the Joint Police Advisory Council, which, among other things, in 2015, the Joint Police Advisory Council began doing the J-PAC barbecues, the community barbecues, to bring law enforcement officers and our greater community, Ohio University students and our community, together to meet police officers to include State Highway Patrol and sheriffs, the Sheriff's Department, Ohio University, and the Athens Police Department as a way for people to get to know their law enforcement agencies. In 2017, October of, the Safe Zone for Athens, the Athens Community Center. This was for trans identity individuals. Started where this training of the Athens Community Center staff went through, training that was provided by the Southeast Ohio Rainbow Alliance and the Ohio University LGBTQ+ Center. In 2019, on March 20th and 21st, groundwater training was, was here in Athens. This was put on by the Athens, or this was sponsored by the Athens County Foundation, Ohio University, the city of Athens, and other agencies that brought the Racial Equity Task Force together, along with, like I said, the Athens County Foundation. And we went through essentially two days of training. I believe it was two to three hours on one day and about six hours on the second day, where there were a number of the city staff, as well as, I believe, city council members were able to attend. And I won't get into all the details, but the groundwater approach is a metaphor for designing and helping practitioners of all level internalize the reality that we live in a racist, racially structured society, and that that is what causes racial inequity. The metaphor is based upon three observations. Racial inequity looks the same across systems. Social economic differences do not explain the racial inequity. And inequities are caused by systems regardless of the, of people's culture or behavior. I went through the training. It was a powerful two days of training. June 2020 is when city council brought forward the resolution declaring racism as a public health emergency. At roughly the same time, during a J-PAC meeting, Chief Tom Pyle reached out to a faculty member who serves on J-PAC, that being Dr. Jackie Wolf, and asked, can the university put together a History of Racism in the U.S. course for law enforcement officers? Jackie, along with Dr. Catherine Jealouson and Dr. Robin Mohammed, as well as Dr. Brian Schoen, got together and started putting together the course outline for such a course. That course covers things like slavery and democracy in America, Part 1, Slavery and Democracy in America, Part 2, which covers basically the early 1700s, all the way through the present day. Race and Racism in American Medicine. The History of Policing and Prisons in the United States is a fourth component. And then a course where there's going to be a lot of open dialogue to kind of speak through everything that they had digested. That course is actually going to start June 28th of the summer. It was put on hiatus because of the pandemic. And both Chief Powers from Ohio University and Chief Pyle here in the city felt that the impact would be greater if it were face-to-face. So that will be starting June 28th, and it will run through August 25th of the summer. So that course will be taking place for law enforcement agencies. In July of 2020, the Ohio University Bobcats Leads Change was created, which is student athletes at Ohio University after the murder, murder of George Floyd, came together and met regularly. I was invited mid-July to speak to the group and have been a regular weekly member of, of Bobcats Lead Change ever since. Eight Can't Wait Initiative also started July of 2020 to where I brought this forward to the police chief, where it has the eight items are de-escalation, use of force continuum, ban chokeholds and strangleholds, warning before shooting, banning shooting at moving vehicles, exhausting all alternatives, duty to intervene, in comprehensive reporting. And tasked the chief with looking at, where are we in this Eight Can't Wait Initiative? And I will briefly go through this. De-escalation training, we will be in compliance. We, we were in compliance on the 28th of April of this year. The banning chokeholds and strangleholds, we've been in compliance with that for over 30 years. Required warning before shooting, 30-plus years of compliance. Ban shooting at moving vehicles in compliance for 30 years. Duty to intervene, we've been in compliance since June 4th of 2020. Comprehensive reporting, we've been in compliance since the 1990s. The National League of Cities Race Equity and Leadership, REAL training took place virtually to where we were able to join that training, which is REAL 100 is normalizing racial equity in local government. These sessions provide an introductory overview for city leaders and staff on historic, on the history of institutional and structural racism in America. That training took place September 9th and September 10th. I believe president of council was on that. There may have been other city council members. I don't recall. I see council member Grace raising her hand. I know that there were a number of police officers for the city also in attendance, as was I. I have actually been through the REAL 100 training twice now and find it very beneficial. The city of Athens Racial Equity Task Force and the Racial Equity Coalition here in Athens worked from December up through, I believe it was March of this year, to come together with how we work together to do a self-assessment for the city of Athens. We have put together 31 members that represent that joint task force and racial equity coalition, along with city employees as we work to further look at ourselves more closely. And I'll get to that, more details on that in just a moment. Athens County Foundation on April of 2021 had an Art of Hosting Racial Equity Training. I also took place in that, as did, I believe, close to 50 other individuals. I was appointed to serve on the National League of Cities Racial Race Equity and Leadership Council as of February of 2021. The city's website on March of 2021, for the first time ever, became multilingual to where an individual can click on the language tab and find hundreds of different languages. I shouldn't say hundreds, lots of different languages. I don't remember the exact number, but you can click on it and it will automatically translate the city's website into any language you choose, as well as Muni code, to where now code can be read in all the different languages for individuals who might prefer to read in their first language, or they are, don't speak English. The, on April 23rd of 2021, we had our first meeting of the Black Business Leaders of Athens County, our charter meeting, which was a wonderful start, where I reached out to black business owners in the city of Athens and had our inaugural meeting. We plan to have that quarterly as we move forward. Tomorrow morning at 10:00 AM, we will have the charter meeting of the Athens Asian American Pacific Islanders Group. I know that President Nisley and I will both be on that meeting tomorrow morning, engaging with our AAPI community to find out, you know, what we can be doing better here in the city of Athens. What are some of the challenges or obstacles they face? And what are some of the more serious situations that they may have found themselves in and find ways in which the city can be as supportive as possible of our AAPI community? The same holds true for the Black Business Leaders of Athens County and the meeting that happened on the 23rd. The city was selected by Power a Clean Future Ohio to receive equity coaching for sustainable cities. This is helping our community build a sustainable, clean energy field, a future that builds on and shares values of inclusivity, equity, and justice for all in our community. The program will include four hours of equity coaching, greenhouse, greenhouse gas inventory, and expert policy recommendations that are equitable, actionable, and affordable here in the city. We are one of the charter cities to receive this training. The Ohio University Voinic School of Leadership and Public Affairs, in conjunction with the Grid Lab, are working on the Appalachian Law Enforcement Initiative Committee Virtual Reality Video Training Project. This is an initiative where the project is going to use the latest three-dimensional virtual reality recording techniques to provide an immersive training experience for law enforcement professionals. Studies have shown that these teaching methods have a much deeper, more lasting impact on learning than does traditional didactic classroom style of teaching or the use of 2D or two-dimensional videos. That will be, that this has come up with council in terms of street closing, and this is, this effort is part of that. Finally, to share with council, we have been working with the Race Equity and Leadership Team at NLC with Leon Andrews, where they are working with the city to put together a customized training package, as well as assessment for the city of Athens. Their mission is to provide, among other things, provide training and technical assistance that builds capacity for local government leaders to identify racial disparities and effectively challenge and address issues through policy and practices, offering network building opportunities and promote peer-to-peer learning, and showcase local government leaders who are advancing efforts through REAL and establish a field of practice that leverages new and existing partnerships and shared knowledge and resources across cities and promote innovative solutions to racial equity challenges in local government. What we're going to be looking at doing with REAL is having a survey of all staff for the city of Athens. And I would, I'll be sharing that with the law director, the auditor, as well as you, President Nisley, and all of council. We're going to do an institutional assessment. We are going to do a stakeholder mapping, as well as data governance with the survey data as we get it. We will also be working with REAL to get training to department heads, but ultimately all city employees, and also use it as an onboarding tool, taking the REAL 100. We will also be going through the REAL 200 training, REAL 300 training, and then we're going to go through with certain individuals and take the REAL 400 training, which is a train-the-trainer course under the National League of Cities Racial Equity, Race Equity and Leadership, using their training assets. There are several other things that I can certainly speak to, but I do want council to be aware and those who are watching tonight, that the city has been, we haven't been sitting around sitting on our hands. We have been very actively engaged when it comes to dealing with systemic racism and making our invite, our community as equitable as we possibly can. The journey is going to be long. I know there's individuals that might be expecting a report to be coming out at some point with everything going on. I will certainly give council updates as things evolve with the self-assessment and other tools that we're going to be using. But everyone needs to bear in mind that 450 years of systemic racism, it's not something that you tackle in a year or two years and you're done and your, the mission is finished. This is a forever mission that we're on this journey, and we'll continue on this journey for racial equity and overcoming systemic racism. But again, I will certainly keep council and the viewing audience posted as to the efforts that are going on, have been going on, and will be going on here in the city of Athens as we look forward into the future. Thank you, President Nisley. I know that was a lot, but it was vitally important.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Patterson. And it's helpful to have that compilation. And we might also add to your report some of the legislation that council has passed over the years. And two other items. Council member Falls worked with Chief Pyle on the frequently asked questions about the police. I think has been extremely helpful to have that on the website. The other thing that I was not aware of is that our police force has crisis intervention training, and that's been something that's been in place in part because of the leadership of Chief Pyle and Officer Valawista. And we've had that in place for something like 30 years, I believe. So these are all important things for us to know and, and to recognize the work of our many community, our many city commissions. So thanks. Right. Yes, council member Claude Felter?
If I might just comment on that as well. This summer, I participated in a national conference for elected social, locally elected officials around the country. And I participated on a panel discussion, or at a panel, that was about these kinds of equity issues and what communities could do about them. And I found it really interesting that there were a lot of activists in that panel and that in cities, including Cincinnati, and I think it was Akron, and cities from many other states, there are people working very, very hard to get their police departments to approve policies that are more fair, that the Athens Police Department has already had on the books for years. They were amazed when I said that the Athens Police Department already has a full-time social worker and a part-time psychologist on staff. They were, I mean, there were about 10 items that they were just amazed that we already had on the books. And they, one person said, you must have one of the most progressive police departments that I've heard of. So just wanted to share that as well, that, you know, we always have room for improvement, but a lot of communities already admire the, the kind of equity issues that we're already dealing with here in Athens.
Thank you, council member Claude Felter. And if, that is the end of your report, Mayor Patterson?
It is.
Okay. Thank you. And Auditor Hecht, did you have any information or communications that you wanted to report tonight?
No report.
Okay. We, we do have some good news, I think, though, that the administrative fee will be being returned eventually to municipalities who have had that collected as part of the centralized income tax, right? And I'm sure we'll learn more about that later. I'll be eager to hear how much money we might get back.
Oh, we think it's about $1,000. It's like half a percent, which, you know, is something. You know, we won that court case and so, yeah. It's still positive.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you very much. All right, we'll move on then to our ordinances for the reading. The first one is Ordinance 3721, an ordinance authorizing the 2021 Street Paving and Repairs Project Number 337. And this will be introduced by council member Claude Felter.
I propose, or I move that we approve Ordinance 3721.
And we have a second from council member Fall.
This is the annual list of the planned paving and repairs projects for, basically for the warm months of the year. And as always, it has been compiled by the observations and, and good thoughts from the street department members, from our city engineer and the director of public works, from the director and deputy director of city safety services, and with Mayor Patterson. One thing I was wondering about is where this list can be accessed by the public once it may, it may be approved? Does that get published on the city website? Or how do people? Sorry, please go ahead, Mayor Patterson.
Sorry. We can certainly, we can certainly post that to the city's website once we have the list of streets that are within the budget and we can get that out there so people know. I don't know if last year we also attached the timetable to those. I will work with the acting director of Engineering and Public Works, Jessica Dine, to see if that can also be included. But we can certainly put that on the city's website.
Thank you. I think that would be really beneficial for the community. I appreciate that.
So, okay. And we, and we do have a tentative list. I know it's not been finalized yet. And we also will in a few weeks. And this tour is open to the public. It'll be virtual for the first time. But we do have a city street tour that Jessica Adine will be preparing. And I'm sure part of the information will be on the paving, as well as other priorities for the year. Okay, so we have a motion and second for approval of 3721. And do we have any additional comments from council members or any other questions? If none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 3821 is an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title 7, Chapter 7.05, Parking Regulations, Section 7.05.03.1, Residential Parking Permit, and introduced by council member Claude Felter.
I, I move that we approve Ordinance 3821.
Second? Second from council member Smedley.
Thank you. I, I am optimistic that this is going to be an ordinance that a lot of people in the city of Athens are going to like. It basically takes what has been a pilot program to allow residents in some neighborhoods to park for 72 hours without having to move their cars instead of 24. We were, the city was pleased with the results of that pilot. And now we're going to expand, expand this program much more widely in the city so that there will be far more people who won't have to be running outside in the rain at night to move their cars, at least not as quickly. So I, as I said, I'm hopeful that, that a lot of people will, will really be pleased about the positive impact this might make in their daily life.
Okay. We have a motion and second, and we have a comment from council member Smedley.
Thank you, President Nisley. I just would like to extend appreciation to former member Pete Katsas. He and I worked on this together to get this reviewed and updated. I also wanted to thank the Westside resident who brought this to our attention as an opportunity to, to again revisit. As a pilot, the program was limited to certain streets. And, and the program is the same as it was during... And, and the program is the same as it was during the pilot, but it lists, lifts, lifts out those specific streets. So now it's available citywide. And just to clarify, it's, it's just for certain residents who have no or just one off-street parking opportunity. And lastly, I wanted to thank Joan Krasinski for who made this program possible. She's the one who did a lot of the groundwork, the legwork to make it a pilot to begin with. So it's been, once again, a good story of community collaboration and engagement to make living in the city a little bit more easier for folks. Thank you.
Great. Thank you for the comments. Any other comments or questions from council members or administration, elected officials or our attendees? If none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 3921 is an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title XI, Business Regulations, Chapter 11.04 Vending, Peddling and Soliciting, introduced by Councilmember Claude Felder.
I move that we adopt Ordinance 3921.
And we have a second from Councilmember Fall.
This is another ordinance that I hope is going to make at least the vendors of Athens and hopefully some customers in Athens happy as well. It will simplify the contract that the, the vendors who have food buggies have to deal with. There used to be two categories for those vendors, and now things are getting simplified. There will only be one category and everyone will say, will pay the same rate, which is $200 a month. And the city is going to expand the different, the number of different locations where food buggies can park. So they can still park on that block between, that block of Union Street between College and Court Street in front of College Green. That will still be one. There will be a new spot that's kind of perpendicular to Bentley Hall Annex that will be on President Street, I believe. So there'll be parking right there. And then there will be parking in the parking lot of the Armory Building so that people who are perhaps enjoying Armory Park right now and maybe if we are eventually able to reopen the Armory Building, different events and activities going on in that building. And so, and the vendors will, will be able to drive around and park in any of those locations. They don't have to be, they don't have to always go to the very same spot.
Okay. Thank you. We have the motion and second. Do we have any comments or questions from council members or administration? Once again, we have a history of some people, some vendors from the community who came forward in our initial discussions. Former Councilmember McGee then carried on further discussion. Councilmember Crowe, we have to thank for move, kind of, and Mayor Patterson for kind of moving this, this whole concept along. And we think making it more usable. So we appreciate everybody's work on this and contributions.
And I dare say that former Councilmember Pete Katsas also, also was helpful in, in bringing up the ordinance in the first place.
Thank you. Yes. All right. If no questions, additional questions or comments from council members and no comments from attendees. And I should do a reminder too to our attendees tonight that if you do want to make a comment or ask a question at any time, we ask that you use the little icon to raise your hand rather than putting anything in the chat. So seeing no raised hands, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 4221 is an ordinance amending Ordinance 10320, authorizing the tax increment financing agreement as part of the creation of the University Estates Incentive District within the city of Athens and is introduced by Councilmember Fall.
Thank you. Last time we spoke about this, there were several questions that were asked of the specific contract that has been negotiated. So I'd like to open that up for a discussion and then go forward with a motion. So I would like Sarah to start the conversation. Thank you.
I, I thought it might be helpful since this is something that has kind of been in, in discussion for quite a while to start off with a little bit of a historical perspective. And so what I wanted to say is that for many, many years, different organizations working in Athens have recognized that there is a need in the city for more housing of many different types. We know that we need more units that are built to be accessible. We know that we need more energy-efficient homes. We need more homes that allow their owners to age in place. We need more high-density construction to decrease the environmental impact of the construction and also decrease the maintenance required by the homeowners. One tool that has been identified as something that the city should try to use to help encourage the type of development that we have identified as needed is the TIF. After years of work on the part of city employees and months and months of work with the city administration and both the Affordable Housing Commission and the Disabilities Commission collaborating with the developer to agree to many different specifications, city council voted in October of 2020 to approve the TIF agreement and the documents attached to it as Ordinance 10320. What we have tonight is the Ordinance 4221, which is an ordinance to amend 10320. This is before us for two reasons. The first one is that when the developer was working with the bank for financing, the bank asked for some definitions of some of the terms that were included in the contract with the city, especially terms with regard to the sustainability of the design and the density construction, those types of terms, they needed definitions for them. The second reason is that during the course of the pandemic and also in response to some significant supply issues related to major climate events, the cost of building materials has increased dramatically. Lumber is up an average of 130% over a year ago, with some types of lumber such as OSB having increased over 300%. Steel is also more expensive. Rebar costs have increased about 20%. For identical homes, some builders have seen the cost of the lumber, just, just the framing lumber for their construction, building two identical homes. In 2020, the framing lumber cost $35,000. In 2021, it cost $71,000. So these increases have led the builder to request an increase of 9% in the maximum base price listed in the agreement. Nothing else about this agreement that was approved by this council in 2020 has changed. Not only that, but the Athens City Council, Ohio University Affordable Housing Task Force, provided recommendations that were adopted by council in 2017 that called for utilizing the TIF to increase the number of housing units in the city. It specifically called for more units with universal design, more units between 125,000 and 250,000, and more units that incorporated sustainability goals. This project, even as amended, meets all of those objectives. We have a developer who has been working in good faith with the city and believing that the city would follow through on our end of the agreement. I feel that it would be sending a very poor message to other potential developers that we would like to bring to the city if they see that after many months of working with the city, the city wants to dramatically change the terms of the original agreement. The city should be working towards more projects like this, more public-private partnerships, more specific directed development projects to meet the needs that have been identified in the city. And I, I fully support moving forward with this project. Three quick additional comments. Two-bedroom units, like specifically to questions that were raised. Two-bedroom units cannot be specified or designated, designated as universally designed because the bedrooms are on the second floor. They can incorporate other elements of universal design, but to be able to label them universally designed, they would have to have an elevator, which is an incredible expense to add to a unit. To go back to something that's come up many different times, just because the Affordable Housing Commission recommends proceeding with a project does not automatically mean that that project is identified specifically as affordable housing. It means that the Affordable Housing Commission has very carefully reviewed the identified housing needs of the city and has carefully reviewed the planned project and has decided that this project helps us to meet our housing needs, housing needs that have been identified as needs that the Affordable Housing Commission is working to address. And so, just to clarify, we're not saying a set price means it's affordable. We're saying that this helps the housing situation in the city. And also, other than the hours of research, communication and collaboration writing that have been done by city employees, the city is, is not investing financial resources into this project. The finances used to build the infrastructure, to build the development, are coming from the developer, not the city, not taxpayer dollars. And I felt like those, those hit on a lot of the key concerns that I've heard over the, what feels like months of, of this project. And so I thought perhaps by leading off with some of those, it would answer some of, some of people's questions or concerns. And also, as a reminder, in, in the agreement, when the developer finalizes their plans before they can begin construction, they are required to come back to both the Affordable Housing Commission and the city's Disabilities Commission for letters of approval. And so I think they've really agreed to, to work with the city to come up with a really, really strong agreement that, that gives a lot of voices in the city to this particular building project. You're muted, Chris.
Thank you. We have talked about this extensively. I would also like to point out that through our comprehensive planning process, this has also been discussed extensively. Housing issues that we have in the city go beyond just affordability. And so we have had recommendations put together by the housing plan that was written, the comprehensive plan that was written, to identify these tools and use these types of tools to develop housing that is needed in the city. In this case, low-maintenance housing, owner-occupied housing, housing that is in an area that already has housing in it so that it's helping to infill some of the spaces up there. And it also has universally-designed aspects and sustainability design. That picks, that ticks off a huge amount of things that the city and the community has stated in the comprehensive plan. So I just, I would like to put that forward. These tools, the comprehensive, the TIF is for, residential TIF is very new. Tools like the downtown redevelopment districts are new. But they are great tools for us because smaller cities can't use some of the things that Columbus uses and stuff. These are perfect sort of tools that have been identified by multiple players through comprehensive plans and everything for us to go forward to be able to address the issues that have been identified over and over again. So I wanted to put that before you. If we want housing that is check the boxes of the housing we need, we need to use the tools that are available for us. So, thank you. Mayor?
I would just like to add something to what Member Grace was saying. And Member Grace, I think you did an outstanding job kind of laying everything out. Is that of the 50 units, 22 of the units are three-bedroom units. These are, these are owner-occupied, side-by-side dwellings. And to have, for the two bedrooms that have bedrooms upstairs, you know, we're talking about an elevator for every single unit of the remaining units that are two bedrooms, which is extremely cost prohibitive. The other thing I'd just like to remember, mention really quick is, again, the TIF monies is used to pay for the non-existing street sewer water storm. You know, it is not money being used for the, the actual build of the structures themselves. It's for city utilities. And at the end of the day, when they meet, inspected by the city, meet our specifications for road designs, water, sewer and storm, then the city will take receivership of that street and we'll be the one in the future maintaining that particular asset. This is what is getting in the way of any developer in the city at this point in time if they're faced with not only building new homes, but also having to somehow build the street water sewer storm and then be able to sell the structures at an affordable price. That's next to impossible without something like a neighborhood revitalization TIF.
Yeah. Also, I, I think it's also important to realize that if this particular project doesn't go on, there's probably not going to be much development in that area because of this infrastructure issue, which is, it takes place all over. The other thing is, is that this TIF, unlike the one that's on East State Street, this one is for 10 years. And it's not 100% TIF, it's a 30/70. And so the other people, the other entities that rely on monies from these sort of taxes, actually, over that 10 years, are going to see an increase in both the, the worth of the land and worth of the houses, which goes directly into the school district and to the county. And that is also a very important thing because right now they're really not getting anything. So it's, for them, it's, it's a win because it increases their, their tax receipts. So, other questions? Well, I think that I will move to adopt 4221. Thank you.
Second from Councilmember Grace.
Thank you.
And are there any other comments or discussion from council members, elected officials or our attendees? It looks like Mr. Swank would like to make a comment. And if, once you're admitted, you will, please provide your name and address and if you represent a group, and we welcome your comments.
Great. Thank you, Madam President. My name is Alan Swank. I live at 40 Townsend on the Far East Side. No comments per se. I've been following this very closely, read all the documents. I just have a couple of questions. My first question is this, the $240,000 proposed price, is that for a two-bedroom unit or a three-bedroom unit?
I think the, the prices are going to be along a scale of 240 up to what I understand is what, 270 for some of the other under-units? But that price point of 240 is very important. And the developer is, is keying in on that from the discussions that I've had. Sarah, do you want to add to that?
Just to specify that $240,000 is identified as the maximum base price for the unit. And that is so a particular home buyer could specify that they want hardwood throughout rather than carpet or they want granite countertops, for instance, and that could increase the base price. But the maximum base price of the units is in the contract is $240,000.
So that would mean a three-bedroom is $240,000, okay? Second question, with the 3% escalator clause in the, in the document and realizing that the builder can only build so many houses a year, in 2025, that $240,000 unit will now be $270,000. Now we're outside the range of the 125 to 250 affordable housing limit. I keep hearing a 70/30 split on the TIF. Is that it? Because when I read the document, it says 75% TIF.
Yes. It's been, I, I think that when with- It's been, I think that when it was initially discussed in the ordinance, it was 70/30 from my understanding. But now, because of the differences, is that I will, that 75/25 is correct. Now, one thing that we need to understand about the numbers that are in the affordability housing plan that City Council adopted, and that was a number of years ago. City Council adopted it after it was written and went through all the other processes, which was also a couple of years. So those identified price points between, in that plan, are not updated for inflation or anything. They are the original numbers. And so, there may be a point where we need to update it or have a formula so that that would be taken into account. So, Sarah?
Thank you. And the last question?
Sorry, just one minute.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
In doing research on that specific issue, I found that just between 2012 and 2019, the cost of new building increased 3.5% to 5.5% every year. And so, and that it has been significantly higher since then. And even before the pandemic, lumber went up 30% between 17 and 18. So I think that it is only appropriate to recognize that when the Affordable Housing Task Force identified a price point of 125 to 250, they published that in 2016, that that is likely to require adjustment as we move forward.
Great, thank you. And the last question, we hear the term solar-ready. Looking at the drawings and the juxtaposition of the units next to each other, will all of the units be solar-ready or just some because of their exposure be solar-ready?
Chris?
Sarah's seen the most updated blueprints and such. I think that one is, it's just like the base price. On a case-by-case situation, people may be, because of how this building is situated and stuff, they may want an elevator, and that would add to the base price. So each individual direction is going to be more of a case-by-case, of whether it's going to be perfectly solar-ready or somewhat solar-ready. But overall, the goal of this whole development is to have a sustainable, solar-ready, extra energy efficiency, and those sort of things. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
One aspect of the solar-ready, sorry, Mr. Mayor, is that it, the wiring and the junction box, everything is in place. So whether a person is able to put a solar array on their roof, or perhaps locate it in their yard, or work out details of where it would best be located in order to get the necessary amount of sun to make it work, the building is constructed in such a way with the junction and the wiring in place to connect it. And that would also apply should anyone want to connect a generator in order to ensure that they have continuous power supply through perhaps unpredictable weather events, especially if we would have seniors who maybe need continuous energy supply for medical equipment or things like that. Everything is in place for those things, whether generator or solar, to be plugged in very easily and connected. And so that's one of the important aspects of the solar-ready. And I am not an engineer, so I may not have used the best terms, but in my mind, it's ready to plug it in.
And it's important to look at the whole project, too, because the sustainability is also from all the resource uses that are being put into it and coming out of the other side when people are using their water and everything. And so I think that the developer has gone and understands the idea that Athens is a wants to develop sustainably, because that's a goal that's put out in the comprehensive plan. And they have put a lot of work and energy in with the administration to really get to yes, I think is the best way to describe it. So, any? Mayor?
I was just going to share, you know, there are national guidelines for having a solar-ready home. And if you read through these, under those guidelines, you will find things like avoid shade from trees, check with the city zoning. We have done a great job under Soul Smart to make sure that we are untying the hands of our residents who want to put solar on their roofs, on the roof of their home, determines whether future solar arrays may be placed. These homes, these units are being designed that way to where they, if they face in the correct direction, where it's going to optimize the solar array, they're there. The roof is ready. Minimize rooftop equipment to maximize available roof area for solar collector placement. The types of roof installed can greatly affect the cost of installing solar later. So if it means putting extra roof sheeting up there before they shingle the roof, then that's what will be done. But I think the most important point is what Councilmember Grace brought up, is that each of these units are basically going to be umbilical-ready, to be able to adapt to a solar system, you know, to where an individual, if their roof doesn't align just right, it's possible that they could have a smaller array unit that's ground-mounted. So there's a lot of possibilities with what the developer has placed into these units.
Okay. Other questions from council members? Okay. Thank you. So we have a motion, and we do have a second for approval of Ordinance 4221. No other questions or comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Ordinance 4321 is an ordinance authorizing compensation for the recently-promoted Arts, Parks, and Recreation Program Operations Manager at a rate in accordance with Ordinance 14220, the Non-Union Personnel Fringe Benefits Package, Section 22, for motion. This is introduced by Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you, President Isley. I'd like to make a motion to approve 04321.
Okay, second from Councilmember Fall.
Thank you, Member Fall. As discussed in committee and at first reading, there has been some realignment, some reorganization at Arts, Parks, and Recreation. And this position, the person in this position received a promotion. But in order to recognize not only gender equality, but also the responsibilities that this operations manager has taken on, the section here, I'll read part of Section 1. "Athens City Council does hereby authorize compensation for the recently-promoted Arts, Parks, and Recreation Operations Manager at a rate 10% higher than the rate from which the employee was promoted, and that the rate be made retroactive to January 1, 2021, which was what was originally intended when this employee was promoted." Thank you, President Isley.
So we have a motion and second. And do we have any other comments or questions from council members? Yes, Councilmember Fall.
I think it's important to identify that paying our employees, you know, competitive wages that show equity for knowledge, gender, and anything else is super important. And, you know, we want our employees to be able to, you know, have a life that's worth living, because a happy employee is much better at doing their job. So thank you for bringing this forward.
And any other comments or questions? Okay, from either council or our attendees, seeing none? Oh, wait, Councilmember Grace, did you want to make a comment?
Just yay for gender equity pay.
All right. Thank you. All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 4421 is an ordinance amending Ordinance 12920, implementing a plan for interim city engineer and director of engineering and public works, and is introduced by Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you, President Isley. I'd like to make a motion to approve 04421.
Second from Councilmember Clodfelter.
Thank you, Member Clodfelter. This is very similar, except different department. This is our interim city engineer, Jessica Dine. And I will read Section 1. Jessica Dine shall be compensated with a temporary 10% pay increase during the period when serving as interim city engineer and director of engineering and public works and assistant city engineer, retroactive to September 29, 2020. And said employee, while serving in this interim position, shall be eligible to receive the annual pay increase authorized by City Council at the pay rate of assistant engineer, retroactive to the first pay period of 2021. And just to remind council about discussing this at committee and at first reading, once again, we have a terrific interim city engineer who's doing many jobs for us and doing a great job. And it was intended that she received this pay, but because of the way that the interim position worked in relation to her previous position of assistant city engineer, which she still is, she didn't get the pay raise. And so this is retroactive to make sure that she is getting paid what she deserves. Member Clodfelter?
I would just like to state that I think that city engineer and director of public works, Jessica Dine, really deserves this. Not only is she a fully credentialed engineer, who we're lucky to have as our, you know, working for the city, but just imagine how much money her excellent work and incredible efficiency and perhaps lack of sleep has saved the city by her being willing to do multiple jobs at once rather than us being absolutely compelled to hire multiple people to get the job done, to get all the work done during this time of the tight budget situation that we had related to the pandemic. So not only is, you know, from everything I've been able to observe and find out about on council, not only is Jessica Dine doing excellent work, she's really done the city a favor by being able to handle so much at one time.
Thank you, President Isley.
Okay. And Auditor Heck, did you have a comment that you wanted to make?
I do. I wanted to clarify this ordinance and what happened. Jessica has not been waiting since September for her 10% raise. She got that. This is an amended ordinance. And according to our Non-Union Fringe Benefits Package, someone hired less than six months before the beginning of the year isn't eligible for the 2% pay increase that council has awarded, not necessarily 2%, but it has been for several years now. So she didn't get that in January. However, that was part of the negotiation when she was hired. So now it is, it added to the ordinance.
... of the overall lost employment in this country during the pandemic. So I just, though I was white-hearted and jovial, I do want to recognize the seriousness of the topic and the importance of recognizing our truly highly-qualified women working for the city and ensure that we are paying them just equitable wages. Thank you.
Thanks for the comments. Okay. No further questions or comments from council members or our attendees? We will have the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 4521 is an ordinance authorizing the purchase and use of an employee dishonesty and faithful performance of duty insurance policy in lieu of bond through the Public Entities Pool, known as PEP of Ohio, introduced by Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you, President Isley. I'd like to make a motion to approve 04521.
Second from Councilmember Fall.
Thank you, Member Fall. Again, discussed as our change in insurance. I will read Section 1 of this ordinance. "The City of Athens, Athens County, Ohio hereby authorizes the purchase and use of an employee dishonesty and faithful performance of duty insurance policy through the Public Entities Pool, PEP of Ohio, a joint self-insurance pool for officers, employees, and appointees who would otherwise be required to give individual surety bond to qualify for office or employment for entering upon the discharge of duties imposed by the office or employment." And we were able to do this through some changes in the Ohio Revised Code, and it's had a number of positive possibilities for the city. Thank you, President Isley.
Thank you, Councilmember Crowell. If no other questions or comments from our council members or our attendees, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved. We now have ordinances for a second reading, one of which I think needs to be suspended tonight, I've been told. And that's our first one. Ordinance 4121, an ordinance closing West Mulberry Street between Richland and Court Street and the sidewalk in front of the courthouse from 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. on Sunday, May 16, 2021, with a rein dated May 17, 2021, for the Appalachian Law Enforcement Initiative Project and declaring an emergency, and is introduced by Councilmember Grace.
Thank you, President Isley. I would like to make a motion that we suspend the rules this evening due to the timing. This project is scheduled to happen on May 16, and the next regular session of council will not be until May 17.
Second. Okay, second from Councilmember Clodfelter. So we have a motion and second for suspending the rules. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The rule's been suspended, Councilmember Grace.
Thank you. I would like to make a motion that we adopt Ordinance 4121.
So.
Saying by Councilmember Reisner, okay.
And this ordinance is to allow the street closure of West Mulberry Street between Richland and Court, and also to prohibit parking for the first four meters of that section of street, and to close the city sidewalk in front of the courthouse for projects that were mentioned by the mayor at the beginning of tonight's meeting. This is for the creation of the video training program for law enforcement that is being created, planned, developed by the Appalachian Law Enforcement Initiative and in collaboration with the Buonavite Center and GrifL.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second for approval of this ordinance. Do we have any comments or questions from council members, elected officials? We do, from Mayor Patterson, yes. We do, from Mayor Patterson, yes.
If you will give me a moment. Again, I would just like to explain what this is going to allow for. There are two major training objectives with the filming that will be taking place. You know, one of them is going to be to produce a scenario in which time, space, and language is used to diffuse volatile situations, plus information gathering, critical thinking, and sound judgment problem solving under stress. The second training scenario will focus on having officers develop greater cultural sensitivity and come to appreciate how damaging to the profession a lack of such knowledge can be.
Thank you.
I, I think this, this type of program development, that's a virtual reality training, could really, really change a lot in training of our law enforcement officers. And I commend the Appalachian Law Enforcement Committee and the GridLab for their collaboration and working to bring this together.
Great. Councilmember Reisner?
Yeah, my question has to do with the, the video. This course will not be just simply for the Athens Police Department, will it? It will be shared with others?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
Shared, just to be clear. Absolutely shared. It is hopefully widely.
Uh huh, okay.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? If none from our council members or our attendees, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 4621 is an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title 37 landscaping regulations and is introduced by Councilmember Fall. And if no questions or comments, we'll move on to ordinance 4721. It's an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title 13, General Offenses, Chapter 13.07, Miscellaneous Offenses, to add Section 13.07.06.1 litter and amend Section 13.07.07 Citation, introduced by Councilmember Fall. If no comments or questions, the next ordinance is 4821. This is an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title 9, General Regulations, Chapter 9.10, Cutting Weeds, introduced by Councilmember Fall. If no comments or questions, the next one is ordinance 4921. An ordinance amending Athens City Code Title 1, General Provisions, to include the landscaping permit fees. This is introduced by Councilmember Fall. If no comments or questions, we'll move on to the next one, which is ordinance 5021, an ordinance granting a special right-of-way permit to Jennifer at Mullen Camp to install a fence at 68 Hudson Avenue, introduced by Councilmember Fall. And we'll move on then to the next one, if no comments. 5121 is an ordinance affirming the disposal of certain fire department equipment no longer needed for a municipal purpose, introduced by Councilmember Grace. And we'll move on then, if no comments, to ordinance 5221, an ordinance amending the 2021 appropriation ordinance and is introduced by Councilmember Crowell. And now we'll move on to ordinances for first reading. And ordinance 5421 is an ordinance authorizing wastewater remote site telemetry improvements. This is project number 339, introduced by Councilmember Grace.
Thank you, President Isley. This is the project that was discussed last week in committee and in speaking with Jessica Dine. Our, this is, this is really critical infrastructure that the city needs in order to properly, adequately monitor all of the city's wastewater remote sites. In that the current telemetry equipment that we have is old enough that it is getting to be difficult or impossible to continue to get parts to repair this equipment. And we need properly functioning equipment monitoring the flow and pressure of our, our remote sites so that city officials would be correctly, promptly notified in the event of any problems. And so this ordinance states that whereas the project includes telemetry upgrades at all of the city's wastewater remote sites to separate communications from the water treatment plant and improve the remote site system, the service safety director is hereby authorized to advertise and accept bids where necessary and enter into contract with the lowest and best bidder for construction of the wastewater remote site telemetry improvements, project 339. And section two, that the 2021 appropriation ordinance, 14020, is hereby amended by appropriating from the unappropriated balance the sum of $540,000 to sewer plant fund 750.637 TC 500 and increasing the total appropriations by said amount. And the service safety director is hereby authorized to expend up to $540,000 from the sewer plant fund for said purchase.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? If none, we'll move on to ordinance 5521. This is an ordinance amending the 2021 appropriation ordinance and authorizing inter-fund transfers, and is introduced by Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you, President Isley. As discussed last week at committee, we have five appropriations to amend our appropriation ordinance and then two related transfers. So I'll go ahead and read through sections one and two of this ordinance. Section one, the 2021 appropriation ordinance, 140-20, is hereby amended by appropriating from the unappropriated balance the following sums: $11,000 to Athens Enhancement Fund 250, transaction code 300. And that includes $1,000 for a micro grants program and $10,000 for the arts outside the box program. Second item, $29,233.96 to CARES Act Fund 285.120, transaction code 600, transfer for public safety payroll. $289,000 to Sewer Fund 750, transaction code 600, for transfer to cover debt payments through the year end. $25,000, excuse me, $35,000 to Stormwater Fund 755.637, transaction code 100 for environmental coordinator. And $9,000 to Stormwater Fund 755, transaction codes 200 to 300. And that includes $4,000 to continue the Athens Soil and Water Conservation District's public education and outreach, which is required by our, the city's MS4 permit, and $5,000 for supplies and postage, and increasing the total appropriations by said amounts. Section two, the auditor is hereby authorized to make the following inter-fund transfers: From CARES Act Fund 285 to General Fund 101, the amount of $29,233.96. And from the Sewer Fund 750 to the Sewer Debt Fund 758, the amount of $289,000. Thank you, President Isley.
Okay, thank you. And if no comments or questions, we will move on to ordinance 5621. This is an ordinance amending the 2021 staffing levels authorized by ordinance 14120, introduced by Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you, President Isley. The environmental coordinator in the previous ordinance, this is to correct our staffing ordinance regarding the funds from which the money is coming for that position's payroll. So section one reads, "The 2021 staffing levels authorized by ordinance 14120 are hereby amended to read as follows. 740.637, water will have a 0.25% for the environmental coordinator. 750.637 sewer will have also a 0.25% going to the environmental coordinator. And 755.637 stormwater will have 0.50% going to the environmental coordinator."
Okay, thank you. We'll move on if no comments or questions. We'll move on to ordinance 5721, and which is ordinance granting a special right-of-way permit to Ohio University to allow installation of a campus shuttle stop at 9 Factory Street. And this is introduced by Councilmember Fall.
Great, thank you. It's a special right-of-way permit that will be used by the university for a bus shelter stop, so transit, for their campus transit. So, thank you. Questions? Okay.
Oh, Mr. Reisner?
Yes, does this mean the university will make modifications to the sidewalks and build a structure and so on?
They, they put drawings in for what they wanted as the plan. So, in the, for it. It doesn't involve building and stuff to make a stop, transit. Great, so, okay.
Okay. And we do have a PDF in our, in our Google Drive giving the details on it that was submitted to the Code Office. Thank you. If no other comments or questions, we'll move on to 5821. This is an ordinance authorizing the mayor to submit an application and execute an agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation for a transportation improvement district, TID, funding, and declaring an emergency. And this is introduced by Councilmember Claude Filter.
Let me unmute here. Yes, we discussed this last week in committee. This is the first of three grant proposals that the acting city engineer and director of public works is preparing to submit. This transportation improvement district grant is the one for which, if approved, they would get a maximum of $250,000 that they plan to use to offset the total construction costs of the Stimson Avenue construction project. We found out that the deadline is a bit earlier than, than some of us understood. It is May 31st. So we will need to suspend the rules next, in our next meeting, to get this approved in time, just so you know. Yeah, it's that one.
Okay, thank you. And if no other questions or comments, we'll move on to ordinance 5921. This is an ordinance authorizing the mayor to submit an application and enter into an agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation for small city program funds for program year 2021 and declaring an emergency, and introduced by Councilmember Claude Filter.
Thank you, President Isley. We discussed this one last week as well. This is, the small cities grant is the one that could potentially be really quite lucrative. In the past, the city has gotten up to seven-digit amounts of funding for this one. And it's also the one that I said, the city, acting city engineer and the director of city and safety services and the deputy director of city safety services are still deciding exactly what they're going to apply for, for this, this year. I think they have it narrowed down to two potential topics yet, and they're still weighing the pros and cons of each. The deadline for applying for this is June 17th, and we will not have to suspend the rules on this one after all. So we will just take this in, in our regular pace of business.
Good, thank you. And if no comments or questions, we'll move on to ordinance 6021. This is an ordinance authorizing the mayor to submit an application to participate in the state capital improvement and/or local transportation improvement programs for issue one funds to execute contracts as required, and introduced by Councilmember Claude Filter.
This is the third of the grant proposals we discussed last week in committee. This is the one offered by the Ohio Public Works Grant Application Program that would award up to $400,000 if, if we are able to get it. This one is intended, they, this is one that they applied for last year as well with the same goal. Both years, they've been hoping to get this money to make improvements to lighting, safety, and infrastructure on the west side of Athens, where a lot of us agree that better lighting in particular is needed to improve the safety, and they would make other improvements as well. So it's a very competitive program. This is one that is kind of tough to get, but the acting city engineer and others have really looked strategically at last year's application and believe they have found several areas in which they can make improvements in hopes of having a stronger application this year. So the deadline for this one is in September. So we will be taking this at the normal pace of city council approvals.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Fall?
I think that this shows why she should get all the money that is coming to her for her work. These grants are long and very detailed. The management of the money that comes in is also very detailed. And the city does a great job on getting grants. We are very successful and pay for more than what we, we put out. So, thank you.
Yeah, I'm, I'm very glad that you mentioned that, Member Fall. I think it is, in fact, admirable that acting city engineer Jessica Dine is willing to pursue three big, complex grants while working two and a half to three jobs, depending on how you look at it.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments or questions? If not, we'll move on to our resolutions tonight. We have two one-reading resolutions. The first one being 621. This is a resolution opposing House Bill 157, amending the law regarding withholding municipal earned income tax for those working virtually from home. And as we mentioned last week, the House Ways and Means Committee had adopted a substitute bill, 157, and that bill would potentially repeal the state's municipal income tax withholding policy during the COVID-19 pandemic. And the, the one that is in effect, section 29 of House Bill 197, was for employer withholding and liability for the employee to be taxable for the city where the principal place of work is located. And that is what is at jeopardy, that we might lose potentially the, the income tax revenues if this Senate Bill 157 would be approved. Now, there was an update that Councilmember Crowell made us aware of and Law Director Eliason, that there was a ruling by a Franklin County judge last week that dismissed a lawsuit that said that the, that this was, that it was unconstitutional and that, that cities could keep collecting their municipal income tax. But nevertheless, we have this House Bill 157, and I believe it is something that the Mayor's Association and the Ohio Municipal, Ohio Municipal League are encouraging municipalities to let the legislature know. So that's the purpose of our, our resolution tonight. Do we have any comments or questions? If not, if we could have a motion for approval of this resolution?
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Claude Filter and seconded by Councilmember Fall. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Nay. The motion carries and the resolution is approved. Next, we have resolution 721. This is a resolution designating the city of Athens as a B-City USA affiliate and introduced by all members of council. And I believe Councilmember Crowell will be initially speaking to this.
Thank you, President Isley. Yes, I'm very pleased to announce that the city society has accepted the application from the city of Athens, Ohio, to become a B-City USA. The Environment and Sustainability Commission, as previously discussed at council, has been working with the city administration and particularly the mayor's office to apply for this, this designation. I'm also happy to announce that this coincides with the Environment and Sustainability Commission's work to add a biodiversity section to the Athens Sustainability Plan. And it also feeds in very nicely with all of Member Fall's hard work on our landscaping ordinance. in very nicely with all of Member Fall's hard work on our landscaping ordinances. So all of these things come together very nicely to really improve our community in terms of biodiversity. I'm also happy to announce that the Environment and Sustainability Commission worked with Ohio University to have Ohio University apply for B-campus USA status at the same time, and they have also received that designation. So we can say that there are no borders today between bees from the city of Athens to Ohio University. Come one, come all pollinators, and enjoy our local community. The city of Amesville is also a B-City USA. So there are not many of them, but we are very fortunate, and Mayor Gary Guzman was very helpful in sharing their work on becoming a B-City USA. So I don't need to read this entire resolution, but I would like to read a few pertinent sections. This is a resolution designating the city of Athens as a B-City USA affiliate, whereas the mission of B-City USA is to galvanize communities to sustain pollinators responsible for the production of almost 90% of the world's flowering plant species by providing them with healthy habitat, rich in a variety of native plants, and free to nearly free of pesticides. And whereas, thanks to the more than 3,600 species of native bees in the United States, along with introduced honeybees, we have very diverse dietary choices, rich in fruits, nuts, and vegetables. And whereas bees and other pollinators have experienced population declines due to a combination of habitat loss, poor nutrition, pesticides, including insecticides, fungicides, and herbicides, parasites, diseases, and climate change. And whereas pollinator-friendly communities can benefit local and regional economies through healthier ecosystems, increased vegetable and fruit crop yields, and increased demand for pollinator-friendly plant materials from local growers. And whereas the city of Athens, Ohio should be certified a B-City USA community because the Athens Sustainability Action Plan includes a commitment to biodiversity conservation. Quote, "By building a better understanding of our local biodiversity and the threats to it, and by acting to alleviate those threats and educating and inspiring local residents to be a part of these solutions, we can do our part to slow the biodiversity crisis while simultaneously making Athens a better place to live. The city of Athens commits to being a good steward of our rich natural heritage, making sure that healthy habitats are preserved, developed, and restored for the benefit of native flora fauna, current residents, and future generations." The biodiversity conservation commitment includes an outline of city of Athens priorities for biodiversity conservation, describes the current status of each priority, and outlines further actions, including where practical goals and indicators. So be resolved by the council of the city of Athens, Ohio. Section one, the city of Athens chooses to support and encourage healthy pollinator habitat creation and enhancement as follows. One, Athens Arts, Parks, and Recreation Department is hereby designated as the B-City USA sponsor. Two, the Director of Arts, Parks, and Recreation is designated as the B-City USA liaison. Three, facilitation of the Athens B-City USA program is assigned to the Environment and Sustainability Commission. And number four, the Environment and Sustainability Commission is authorized to and shall, A, celebrate. So we're definitely going to hold some educational events to celebrate our pollinators' publicity and information, so we will install at least one authorized B-City USA sign and encourage the creation and maintenance of the information about B-City USA on the Athens website. Habitat, we are committed to developing and implementing a program to create and expand pollinator-friendly habitats on public and private land. So that's where Member Fall's changes to our landscape ordinances really work well. Pollinator-friendly pest management within the city of Athens, policy and plans, and then a commitment to renew this every February. This first year, we'll get about 18 months under the first designation, and then in February of 2023, we will renew this program. Let me just say that the biodiversity section of the sustainability, the sustainability plan was enhanced or really created and made a significant part of the city's plans, thanks to the Chair of the Environment and Sustainability Commission, Amy Delock, who worked very hard on that, along with Commission Member Stefan Gleisberg and Jasmine Facoon. So we're very pleased to have those members and all the members of the commission working very hard on this, but we're very pleased to have this designation for the city of Athens. Thank you, President Isley.
Thank you. Okay. And with that, that motion to approve, right?
Can I just say, yay, that's awesome with B-City. I really appreciate going forward with this and going forward with reducing the amount of mowing and everything that the city administration will be able to do to fulfill this important thing that fulfills the B-City, but also when we look at other climate change resilience things that we've pushed forward, it's super important. So thank you, and thank you to the commission.
So before we get any more comments, because I might forget, so we have a motion from Councilmember Crowell, and do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Councilmember Claude Felter, and any other comments or questions? Councilmember Claude Felter.
I'm delighted that both the city and the university, so there won't be any little barrier problems for the bees, are, have applied for this successfully. I think it's wonderful. And I was just thinking, just as a general comment, perhaps it would be beneficial for the city or city council or the Environmental and Sustainability Commission, I don't quite know who should do it, to create kind of a list of all the different sustainability initiatives and policies that the city of Athens has, and put it on a city website somewhere. I think that kind of information could be really appealing to potential Ohio University students, because younger people are really interested in what's going on environmentally these days, especially with the climate. I think it could be appealing to people who are looking to work remotely somewhere and are just looking for a place with a high quality of life that Athens could really benefit from having more of. And I just think there are a lot of residents of Athens who would feel proud and happy if they could read a whole list of all the green initiatives that the community has and all the green policies that we're already using. So, just a suggestion.
Thank you, Councilmember Crowell, for the work on this and the Environmental and Sustainability Commission's work on this also. So with a motion and second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. All right. Passed unanimously. We now have announcements and other business, and we have two commissions' reappointments listed, but I'm going to add a third one for the Shade Tree Commission, so let's move on that one first. Councilmember Fall, we have reappointments to Shade Tree for James Dyer and Nancy Walker.
Great. Thank you. I move that we appoint, reappoint James Dyer and Nancy Walker to the Shade Tree Commission.
Second.
Second from Councilmember Claude Felter. And all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Okay.
Thank you.
Reappointed. Next is the reappointments to the Environmental and Sustainability Commission, with Councilmember Crowell reappointing Megan Almeida, Elaine Getz, and Megan Westervelt.
Yeah, thank you, President Isley. And just to clarify, Megan Westervelt will be a new member of the Environment and Sustainability Commission. She will be the student member for the next year. Megan is a master's student at Ohio University, and she will be replacing Abby Rajam, who did a terrific job on the commission, and we will miss her, but we're looking forward to welcoming Megan and reappointing Elaine and the other Megan. So I'd like to make a motion to accept all three of these for the Environment and Sustainability Commission.
Second. Seconded by Councilmember Fall. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Oh, yes.
I would just like to point out that it's really good that we have a student representative on this. It's something that we should look at in some of our other commissions, because that does get a lot more input and buy-in into the processes that we do and the projects we do. Thank you.
And if I may say so, I would like to say that I think that Megan Westervelt is an outstanding choice to be on this commission. Megan had a Fulbright to Ecuador and was working in really environmentally sensitive habitats, working on projects related to indigenous rights, and those were largely related to the environmental issues they were facing from oil companies and stuff. So Megan knows a great deal about climate change and environmental issues, so I'm delighted to help approve her to this commission.
Any other comments? All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Those confirmations are completed. And lastly, we have the mayor's reappointment to the Recreation Advisory Board of Shawna Switzer and Councilmember Claude Felter.
I am delighted to recommend the reappointment of Shawna Switzer. Shawna is a very active member of the Arts, Parks, and Recreation Commission. She has suggested initiatives that the commission had never done before, including a development committee, and she is the first to stand up for people who play soccer, both children and adults. And she's just a very active and involved member of the commission, and I very much hope everyone will reappoint Shawna to the Arts, Parks, and Recs Committee.
Do we have a motion for her reappointment?
Yes, please.
And a second from Councilmember Fall. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. And to welcome and also sincerely thank all the citizens who serve on these different commissions. It's an incredible amount of volunteer work, and we do appreciate all the good ideas and initiatives that come forward because of that. We now, oh, and we will be having a committee meeting next week, so committee chairs, if you could make sure, and administration, that if you have any items that need to come forward, our hard-working clerk of council, Debbie Walker, if you could get those items to her by Wednesday, it'd be greatly appreciated. It makes life a little more sane for her. Then we always have at the end of our meetings, these public meetings, the opportunity, or on our regular business meeting nights, we have the opportunity for citizens to speak on legislative items and city services not covered on the agenda. So of our two attendees, you have an opportunity to speak, if you would like to, for three minutes. And I don't see hands raised, so I will assume then that we can move towards motion to adjourn. So moved by Councilmember Fall and seconded by Councilmember Crowell. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 And you know what? Wait a minute. Before we vote on this, we're going to interject in an announcement. I'm sorry, Mayor Patterson, I missed you. You wanted to mention during communications, and now you're bringing it up here. So good. We haven't left yet.
I'll be quick. So thank you, President Isley. I do want to report to city council that we were successful in getting a CDBG coronavirus grant authorized. It was $83,000, I believe, and it was for viral load testing equipment where we will have an additional, I believe it's, three additional testing sites throughout the city where we can better isolate where there might be increases in coronavirus within our neighborhoods. So this was great. It was great news. We just received, I received the letter to be signed this morning from the Development Services Agency, DSA, so this will be good news.
Oh, yes. And one other announcement, thank you, from our clerk of council, that we may also be having a special session next week in order to move certain pieces of legislation forward in a timely fashion. And Councilmember Grace, yes?
Just wanted to say thank you, Mayor Patterson, for that announcement. I remember introducing the legislation, authorizing the application for that grant, and I was recently wondering what happened, so that's excellent news. Thank you. More successful grants.
Thank you to the administration for all that work. All right, we do have the motion and second for adjourning, so we'll return to that. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Okay. Thank you for a good evening's work, and thanks to the audience.